Be quiet, the meeting is being recorded. So I'll help you order this District of Clearwater Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 19, 2020 at 2:00 PM. Are there any late items from councilors that they'd like to add to the agenda? A few, uh, Councilor Taylor.
And just let it be.
We've got a whole lot of things we've got a tow truck in that thing here, but we're going to add Committee of the Hole to other business, which is, uh, 28. And anything else if you do see up to speak up because I can't see everybody on screen right now. If not, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda and amend it noting we're changing Items 4 and 7 in order? So Alex will go up first and then we'll move to the transiting. Um, yeah, so move by Councilor Taylor, somebody else moving seconding?
Second.
Again, uh, Councilor Herring first, all those in favor? And we're going to say nobody opposed, we'll say that's passed. Adoption of three sets of minutes or two sets of minutes. So, uh, Recommendation A, mover and a seconder?
Moved.
Moved by Councilor McKendy, seconded by Councilor Taylor, all those in favor? Nobody opposed? If you're opposed, well, we've got enough. So Item B, Minnesota Regular Council Meeting, held May 5th, mover and a seconder please? Councilor Herring, Councilor Taylor, all those in favor? That is passed, no opposed. Okay, uh, Alex, you're up.
Okay, um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, thank you so much for having me and Garnet here today, uh, to present the CWPP. Um, I'm going to switch to the next slide, let me know if it's changed and every, and the screen share is still working. Um, so I just wanted to start by thanking the planning team. Uh, this was really a collaborative project with all the organizations that you can see logos of in front of you. Um, and we had a lot of great discussions and insights from the planning team, um, especially bringing that local knowledge of the project area. And hopefully this CWPP can serve as a really good, uh, foundation for building the resilience of the communities in the project area moving forward. So for those who aren't familiar, um, this is the area of interest for the project and so I'll call it AOI from now on in the presentation just for the sake of efficiency. And as you can see, it included, um, multiple communities, uh, so the District of Clearwater and then Blackpool, south to Round Top, uh, part of Baden Bee, Birch Island, as well as the Clearwater Valley Road Corridor. And this was intended to capture some of those shared risks and opportunities since wildfire doesn't recognize administrative boundaries and these communities are all located fairly close to one another, um, it made sense to look at their wildfire risk Um, I don't have time today to talk about the methods we use to develop the CWPP, but I did want to mention, um, for those who aren't very familiar with the program, that it is a standardized template that you follow, um, and it's developed by the Union of BC Municipalities and the BC Wildfire Service. So there's certain required components, um, and analyses that you do for a CWPP and certain content that has to be included, um, and that's reflected in the little icons, um, listed here. So one of the key results from the project is looking at this local wildfire risk classification. And this is a scoring procedure that's developed by the BC Wildfire Service. And the idea is to try and understand how wildfire risks vary spatially across the area of interest. Um, and so a big takeaway from the slide you see in front of you is that we found that the wildfire risk is elevated across nearly the entire area of interest. Um, so all that orange you see, uh, corresponds to a rating of high risk. Um, and you'll notice that there's a lot of gray in the center and that's all the private land. Um, the scoring process specifically excludes private land, um, but we can kind of infer what we think the risk would be based on the values that you see around the private land. So big message here is that there is a lot of wildfire risk on this landscape and that makes sense when you look at, it's a landscape of very continuous forest with a lot of conifer trees and the residences and structures are essentially embedded in that matrix of forest. And so this result wasn't surprising to me or to anyone on the planning team. Another component we added to the project that's not part of the CWPP template, but we thought might help understand some of the complexities of these communities is what we call the Neighborhood Exposure Assessment. And this was designed to understand how factors related to evacuation and suppression challenges might affect, um, wildfire response or the likelihood of entrapment and how these factors varied across the area of interest. And so you'll see that certain neighborhoods got flagged as having a higher exposure level, but that's not to say that there isn't still risk and exposure in all of the neighborhoods in the communities. And there will be value in, in doing mitigations across the entire project area, but these ones flagged in red, um, had a combination of factors that we felt left them particularly exposed, uh, during a wildfire. So now I'll jump into some of the strategies that we developed. I won't have time to go into each of them specifically, but I'll try to hit at a high level the main categories of recommendations. And then if there's any specific ones that, um, we want to talk about further in the question and answer period, then feel free to, um, make it known which ones you want to hear about. Um, and I also want to take a moment to thank the planning team because the credit for these really rests with everyone in the group because there were a lot of really awesome suggestions that came from each of the member organizations and in particular the local fire departments. So the strategies fell into sort of four main categories. The first would be fuel management, um, then fire smart and outreach, evacuation and preparedness, and suppression resources. And then these are all really underscored by the need for communication and public participation. Um, one theme that really came out in the online public survey that we did as part of the project and the public open house that was held back in November is that community members really want to be in more involved in preparing for wildfires and they, they really want to learn more and also give more feedback into elements of preparedness. Um, so that piece kind of underscores each of the strategies. So the first main category, um, relates to fuel management. And I know this is a concept that folks in Clearwater are pretty familiar with because it's a very, um, proactive community with a lot of folks in the resource sectors. And so the map you see before you are the proposed field treatment units that we've delineated as part of the CWPP. Um, and the intent of these would be to try and buffer values so that as a fire approaches, you can slow down that fire and reduce the intensity. And that not only reduces the risk of losing that value, but also buys first responders time and greater margin for safety and can help keep folks safer during evacuation. Um, but it's really important to note that doing fuel management in these forest types is really complex and kind of tricky because there's some competing objectives where things might not always align how you'd like. For instance, um, there's a lot of forest health concerns related to Armalaria root disease and Douglas fir bark beetle. And so in order to be successful with fuel management, it will have to involve hiring the right, um, forest professional who can navigate these different, uh, factors and develop a fuel management prescription that's going to meet fire behavior objectives, but without causing a lot of unintended consequences in other areas. Um, and so, sorry, I'm just moving to my next page of notes here. Um, so really these need to be tailored to the specifics of the local forest. And there's some guidelines that we've included in the CWPP for, uh, guiding this, but ultimately it will be up to whoever the forest professional is to decide what the best balance of factors is going to be. Um, it's also important to note that current funding streams don't, uh, support fuel management on private land, so these treatments are limited to public land only, but there would certainly be value in performing fuel management treatments on private land. And that's why that engagement with the public is so important, especially with the number of large, uh, parcels that exist on this landscape. And along that vein, um, to implement these will need to be a collaborative, uh, process because many of them overlap multiple administrative boundaries and so you might have to bring different funding streams to bear, um, and work within the guidelines and objectives of different land managers to get these completed. So the next category of recommendations surrounds the Fire Smart Program and general outreach with the public. Um, I think Fire Smart's becoming more and more familiar across the province and nationally, but there's always more work that can be done to help people understand the program and engage with it. And so some key recommendations related to Fire Smart that are included in the CWPP are to host some more public events related to wildfire, um, especially ones where you can have local experts and, and community leaders, um, having a two-way dialogue with members of the public about wildfire. And that could even include, um, wildfire messaging in existing celebrations or, uh, having a booth at the farmer's market. It doesn't have to be limited to wildfire-specific events. Um, another great tool would be, um, this was an idea that came from Sherri Madden at the TNRD, was a Red Rock Green Rock Program. And this is a concept that's been used in California and a few other places where you actually go out and do, uh, property assessments and provide the results of those assessments to the homeowner. Um, and one way that it's been done is you actually paint rocks red and green and people get a green rock if the assessment of their property, um, from a fire perspective is favorable or they get a red rock if they have more work to do. And so the thinking was that providing this feedback to property owners could really, um, spur them into action more so than just, um, verbal messaging or event. Um, and then another point was, uh, related to the large private land parcels and just how expensive it can be to implement Fire Smart. And so any opportunity that community leaders have to support Fire Smart on private land, uh, whether that looks like free tipping for the day, um, for brush disposal or providing a dumpster in a centralized location or even pursuing rebate programs, uh, through the community resiliency investment. There's, there's not as many options as we probably all like for providing this support, but keeping apprised of any new developments and just seeking opportunities like the United Way Program, for example, wherever they exist to help folks implement this, um, work on their properties.
Alex, you're at 10 minutes now.
Oh, thank you Garnet.
Actually 11.
Okay, um, so we're right where we needed to be. Um, so the next category surrounds evacuation and this is a big one for the Clearwater area. Um, as, as everyone on the planning team pointed out multiple times, um, there's so many one-way-in, one-way-out locations, including Wells Gray Park, which is such a huge draw for tourism and is really at the heart of the area. And getting all of those folks out through constrained, you know, limited evacuation routes during a fire could be really, really challenging. And we talked about a lot of different options for supporting this. And one that came up frequently was, sorry, I'm just going to get a drink of water here. I got stung by a bee on the face a couple days ago and I've just been having a whole host of allergic symptoms ever since then. Um, so one thing we talked about was expanding cell coverage in the area so that, um, people can receive early notification. And I know that's a whole can of worms and, uh, Leslie and others have been hard at work trying to get that to happen. Um, so in the absence of getting cell coverage, which would really be the ideal, um, one thing we talked about was potentially sirens or some other kind of early warning system. And then also addressing the evacuation routes themselves. So looking at strategic opportunities across the landscape for, um, installing additional bridges, improving existing bridges, um, creating alternate routes to access highways in the region, um, improving road surfaces. Um, anytime you have big potholes or rough road surfaces, it creates just more opportunity for a vehicle breakdown or someone getting stuck and then compromising that evacuation route and blocking it for others. Um, so finding ways to make sure that roads get maintained as frequently and as well as possible. Uh, another strategy that has been utilized in California and elsewhere where there's a lot of wildfire risk, um, is a concept called Emergency Response Teams. And what this would be is local citizen groups, uh, maybe on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis or community basis, uh, where you have volunteers who get trained in supporting an evacuation and they go out into the community and do some work ahead of time to identify which homes have seniors and those with special needs, um, and just be available to help first responders during an evacuation and try and streamline some of that chaos that can result when people are afraid and trying to leave all at the same time. And then lastly for this category was something, um, that the communities are already involved in, but I think the program could be expanded and that's tabletop exercises and mock evacuation. Um, so just working out the kinks of different scenarios of evacuations and, and even testing out the routes, um, maybe you pick one neighborhood that's got a high risk and give it a try in a live setting because it's, it's always shocking, um, the issues that can arise when, uh, you try and get all this mobilized in the heat of the moment, but haven't had a chance to sort of brainstorm different scenarios and outcomes ahead of time. And it's also a great opportunity for the fire departments and the wildfire service and other emergency response organizations to meet and develop that relationship so that they already have that familiarity with each other ahead of time. So the last category surrounds the local wildfire response resources. And I had a great experience working with every single fire chief, of which there were four, um, for this area of interest. So you have the three formal fire departments headed by Chiefs Weber, Savage, and Smith, and then the upper Clearwater Fire Brigade, um, under Steve Murray. And so they all provided some feedback on what they felt like could improve their program. And then the planning team and Garnet and I also brainstormed some additional ideas. And one that came up almost immediately was water access, which surprised me initially just given the amount of rivers and waterfalls and lakes in the area, but there are neighborhoods within, uh, these communities where water access really is a challenge. And so looking for opportunities to install, um, dry hydrants where feasible or even permanent tanks, um, and then expanding, uh, resource sharing agreements with homeowners to access their irrigation, um, or their wells. And so that, that way, fire departments don't have to rely solely on trucking in water, um, especially when evacuations can clog the very same roads that they would need to get into the community in the first place. Another, um, thing that came up was the fire protection districts. Uh, currently there's a number of unincorporated areas that are not within these districts and it can end up causing a bit of a delay in response when, um, the fire departments have to obtain authorization to go respond outside their response area, um, before they can action. And creating gasless coverage of the fire department response areas to include places like Birch Island, um, and Blackpool and areas of Blackpool outside the response area and the Clearwater Valley Road Corridor could really go a long way to streamlining response because the, an ignition in an unincorporated area could quickly threaten, um, the municipality and vice versa. Um, another concept that we talked about was increasing cross-training with the BC Wildfire Service because each of the local fire departments could really learn a lot from wildfire service and vice versa. Um, looking at additional funding options, um, to support higher staffing levels for the fire departments during the wildfire season, um, as well as having more permanent positions so that they can hold on to their, um, valuable and experienced, uh, volunteers who may struggle to afford to continue to fill that role while also maintaining their full-time jobs. And then lastly, um, an idea we thought about was a Wildland on Call Program. So a phenomenon that's happened in a lot of large fires, um, in DC in the last few years is you often see homeowners and forestry workers and visitors wanting to stay and help, uh, rather than evacuate. And while on paper this seems like it'd be great to have more hands on deck, um, it can often create chaos and, and it results in those people not getting to help out how they want to or just makes things more complicated for the incident command team. And so creating some kind of on-call program where you can have, uh, a chain of commands figured out ahead of time where citizens can fold in under the local fire department and assist on a wildfire without that chaos aspect. And how that exactly would look would obviously require a lot of discussions and collaboration amongst wildfire service and all of the other administrations, but I think it's a concept that would have promise, particularly in places like Clearwater and the other communities in the AOI where there's a lot of folks who either were firefighters themselves previously or have a tremendous amount of forestry and local knowledge, um, and really could help out a lot on a fire, particularly when provincial resources are strapped. So, um, I'll just end with some next steps. Uh, a lot of the strategies I just touched on are going to have to be collaborative in nature because they're multidisciplinary, multi-jurisdictional. And I think the Forestry Working Group and the Clearwater Wildfire Roundtable Series are great, um, groupings or, um, events to help spearhead some of these conversations. Um, and I, obviously a big question mark with everything is how are you going to pay for it? Um, so a big task ahead now is figure out, okay, for each, um, recommendation, what are the potential funding streams, uh, that could be brought to bear? And we've included some suggestions related to that in the CWPP where we could. Um, and then for others, like building bridges, that's obviously going to be a larger process where there's not necessarily a clear funding stream available now, but if, if the right people are contacted and brought into the fold, then, um, hopefully it can become a reality. And so I'll end with, uh, some photos from Chief Savage of the, uh, Dunn Lake wildfire, which definitely brought home, uh, for this area what the landscape is capable of and really underscores the importance of working together to challenge, to face these challenges, given that wildfires just don't care about administrative boundaries and, and things can just evolve so quickly in a hot, dry summer. Um, and so I think that's a somber but important note to, or lens to look at this whole process through. Um, so here is our contact information and please feel free, anyone, to reach out with questions or concerns or comments about the project. Um, after the presentation and any feedback we receive from council will be editing the final draft of the CWPP and presenting that, um, by June 1st. So, um, project is definitely in the final stages, but it's never too late to have more insight and, and keep the discussion going. So that's what I had and I guess now we'll hop to some questions and Garnet and I will try and kind of bounce back and forth on who's, who's better to answer, um, any particular question.
Any questions? Uh, Councilor Herring, Councilor Bafford?
Yeah, can everyone hear me?
Little bit.
Pretty quiet.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, how's that?
That's better.
Okay, so I'm just curious if there's any, um, sort of prioritization in the report. Which of these recommendations are, you know, for second, third? Is there any indication of that?
Go ahead, Alex.
Oh, Garnet, were you going to go for that or do you want me to?
Oh, go ahead, Alex, yep.
Okay, um, no, not specifically. Um, it's hard because they're all sort of in different, um, arenas or facets of wildfire risk. Uh, we didn't want to explicitly prioritize them, especially because we want to leave council with the flexibility to pursue the ones that make the most sense for you, given, um, current realities. Um, that being said, my personal opinion is that, um, if I had to focus on one aspect, I think the evacuation part is just so critical because, um, I think a lot of the fires in California and elsewhere in the last few years have really shown how chaotic and, and Fort McMurray, for example, it can be when you have only one way in and one way out. And, and especially with the volume of, of tourism that this area sees, there's going to be so many more people trying to leave than just your, you know, local population could account for. And so I think that's a really critical one to pursue, but all, all the recommendations have value, I guess, is my, my loosey-goosey answer there.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just sort of back that up, uh, what Alex just said. I think that evacuation piece is really important, uh, particularly when you look at the Wells Gray Provincial Park in your area and all the, you know, visitors, tourists that come through the area. Um, it, it is definitely a pinch point for things and, and we know in this valley from our experiences in O3 with the evacuations that happened with the McClure fire and, and, you know, recent, you know, in 17 with the, um, Little Fort. Um, that, that, how do you get people out of harms way is a key part of everything here. So that's, that's where I would start to.
Hey, Sheriff, I think Sheriff Hollis, you want to say something or is your mic looking there? Councilor Bafford next, I think, wait.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Buckwell. Um, a couple of comments and then maybe a couple of questions. First, thank you for explaining what the exposure tiers were, um, in the report itself and what the gray areas were. Um, I think for me, looking at an early warning system, having gone through the alert in the past years and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Seems to be a bit of a struggle at times on getting the information out to people or getting their attention. Um, so early warning might be something I might look at focusing. I guess the questions I would have maybe are, how important are the field breaks in relationship to getting those established ahead of time, like 100-meter-wide buffers that's drawn on some of the maps? Um, where the power line are and things like that, because that gives a real potential to slow a fire down if they're coming. I'm not sure where you guys would prioritize that. Getting those things established, finding out how you get those things established and getting that done, right large buffers that are maintained that way. And how are the threat plots decided, the locations, were they on biogeo zones, were they on timber types? I'm just curious how that was done.
Um, sure. Okay, so for your first question around, um, this is definitely a topic where you might hear disagreement even within the fire community. So I think it's important to preface that, that there's different perspectives on the values of field breaks and also what an effective field break looks like. And certainly I've used them myself as a firefighter, so I, I can attest to their value. Um, my personal feeling is, is I would rather focus fuel management efforts directly around the values first. And the reason for that is that field breaks, um, because fires can spot over them, um, you, you have to be using them for them to be effective. They're not going to stop a fire on their own. They have to, fire suppression resources have to be there, um, either doing a burnout or using water on that field break for it to be effective. And the idea is that the field break is going to give them that greater margin of safety to attack the fire than if they were to have to attack it in an untreated area. But the, the big challenge is that during times when there's fires everywhere in the province, resources get spread incredibly thin. And so you can't always count on there being resources available, first of all, to use the field break. Um, and then the field break needs to be sort of ready-made for them to, to get there and, and utilize it right away. And so my personal opinion is that it's best to start with those, um, treatments right around values that can hopefully slow a fire down as it approaches a value and have merit even when unsupported by fire suppression personnel. Um, but another practitioner may tell you something different and there's certainly major pros and cons to both area-based field treatments around values and, and field breaks. But, um, I think given that fires can spot over them so easily, um, I hesitate to focus efforts there versus starting around, uh, the values themselves and then working outwards. Um, and then your second question, uh, that was around the threat plots, is that correct? Um, so the, the threat plot locations, um, I looked at quite a few different layers, um, like aerial imagery, uh, location of roads, um, topography, um, forest type information in the VRI and the various fire risk-related data sets. And I tried to scatter the plots so that I would capture variation in the mature forest types across the area of interest. Certainly there's value in assessing all types of fuels, including young fuels and plantations and grassy areas, but generally, given that mature forests are capable of producing that kind of worst-case scenario fire behavior, I wanted to make sure that I captured the variability in, in that forest, um, condition and successional stage first. Um, and given the huge size of the project area, um, I was limited in how many plots I could do, um, in the timeframe and the budget. So that's where I, how I decided to prioritize. Um, does that answer your question?
No, it did. Thank you very much. I was curious about that and it's nice to know you used more than one aspect to just establish a threat plot.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, to some extent, they were limited on where I could get to, um, so that's. So they did need to be fairly close to roads, just in the interest of time. But I think it did manage to capture a good amount of variability despite that limitation.
The only other quick question I have is that, is it worth looking at point four, like looking at C R I funding to do some kind of a fire smart demonstration on maybe the area around Dutch Lake, right in the middle of town, or something like that, where people would be able to see what it actually looks like on some municipal-owned land and maybe continue to push for fire smart stuff, fireproofing stuff on private land? I know we've pushed without the government for several years, and they keep trying to come up with a model to be able to do it. So is that, is it worth keeping the pressure on to find that funding source?
My short answer would be yes, and I'm seeing Garnet smiling here, and I'm wondering if he has some points he'd like to throw at this one.
Yeah, sure. And just so you know, Alex, maybe you could stop your screen share, and then people can see everyone's Hollywood squares there.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm able to see the squares and the screen, but I'm not sure how it's working for everyone else. Okay, I stopped the screen share.
Great, thank you. So that's a great question. I think that you can never go wrong with the demonstration forest, if you will, and if you have examples of how you'd like your community behavior to be modeled, that's your opportunity. So I would, in a short answer, say yes, keep the pressure on, look for that opportunity. I know we've worked with other communities and done some other things. Logan Lake is one where we have a lot of experience with them, and we are definitely using target areas that are near, like a church, that is readily accessible, and people walk it with their dogs, that kind of thing. And, you know, it's used to showcase the program. So your fire chiefs and your local champions can use it for that purpose. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, real quick? If not, I'll just prove you have.
I would just like to add a comment to that. So with the two U resilience league funding that we have right now, we will be looking at new prescriptions on four sites. Initially, there was five identified, but one of them started that field treatment on it. One of them will be the Ogden Rowan Park, very thick forests, in an area that's definitely a high fire risk, like the Trenton Valley. So we would be able to use that one as a demonstration. Or, it's not really close to houses, but still within a neighborhood that a lot of people live in.
Okay. Sorry, if you're on just phone call and if you have a question, just speak up. If not, we'll just thank Alex and Garnet for their presentation and go from there. Well, thank you. That was great. Hopefully, we can find some funding and some resources. And just looking around my neighborhood, every other neighborhood I've driven through, especially with the rolling cars still happening, we definitely need a lot of work around town, especially on the fire smart town, to give us the line of how to move forward. Shelley, did you put your hand up, or was that a clap? Clap. There you go. So there you go, clap. Thumbs up for that. Thank you for your time, and anybody that wants to check out, check out. We're going back to regular council business here. Moving on to item four, a.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Bye.
Thanks.
For all these people to pop off the screen, because I know it does sound interruption on the other side. We're almost down to the Brady Bunch again. Here we go.
Am I allowed to listen in, or should I take off?
Oh, you can do whatever you want. Now, if watching council meetings on your Zoom or listening to council meetings on your Zoom call is riveting and lifestyle choice for you, then go right ahead. We won't stop you there.
Well.
We have a lot of meetings today, so we're, you know, back to normal here, almost.
Yeah, well, I actually think it, I mean, for me, it is interesting to hear what you guys are working on and stuff, so if you don't mind, I will listen in.
For sure. No problem. Okay, so moving on, sorry, item five, the A, you know, B C Transit, we tabled this one last time, but we still have to fix, finish this unfinished business here. There's a recommendation, and I'll let Miss Gru speak, because she has touched base a little bit with B C Transit since meeting.
So you have background in the staff report prior to two thousand seven in the regional districts, when the ones that engaged in the master operating agreement was B C Transit and the other two mean services were operators. So upon incorporation, Ministry of Product Transferred the management of that to the district of Clearwater. We hold an annual operating agreement that gets renewed based on service levels and terms of the budget each year. And then if council, if the conversation was, you know, we were a little bit uncertain about some of the services that we had in place before the council, and those were the communication aspects of it. So for probably three years now, bus routes have been requested to be put on the bus itself. So, for example, on table one, page twenty-one, you see Route One is Bay and Bee, so it's just a destination to Bay and Bee. And then when they're coming back from Bay and Bee, the sign above should say to Clearwater. And then Route Two is for Black Hill. Route Three is the Community Loop. And then ten is Valley Connector, which I believe it does put the Valley Connector up. One of the concerns is the Community Loop is used a lot, as we think, and we believe it partially is, and we, B C Transit agrees with that, that it's because people aren't really sure where the bus is going to. So having the route on the bus is quite important to enhance the service. In conversation with B C Transit, they have been working for several months, actively seeking to have that updated. So she was going to find out again, see what happens to the destination signage. In conversation with them over the last few months, prior to the A O A coming to the table, our communications person had provided some suggestions that are under table two of how to market the B C Transit. And we were getting somewhere, and then COVID nineteen hit, which obviously affected them extremely, quite devastating to B C Transit, on what they have to go through to whether we're going to receive our fair money or not, that they are, they had applied to the federal government for grant funding. They're having their strategy meeting up Thursday afternoon, and I'm sure we'll get any amount of time on whether they are able to provide funding. For us, it's probably maybe twenty-five hundred dollars, but, yeah. Anyway, so if you have the information before you, they are working diligently on getting that signage happening. If we decided that we wanted to cancel the service, there are a few steps that will be required. For example, we have to give them a hundred and eighty notice that we wanted to step out, and this already is an effective April first. We do have a recommendation before you today. I believe the service has been well received in Clearwater, and we did do that survey, and the majority of the people that aren't using the service responded that they will someday, so that's the decision of council at this point.
Okay, any questions of this group before we ask for a mover and a second or an organization? Council Sim. I can't hear you. Okay, I can hear you. Now I can hear you. Oh, I heard you, heard something click there for a second.
So I want to, I think, I mean, I think that council wants to proceed with the signing of the agreement and get that off. I think for me, the only reason I don't want to sign it is because I really want this three-year conversation to finally come to an end. And by not signing, it becomes a red tape issue that they have to loop back to us. I feel it's kind of our last resort. Otherwise, I don't want to go through another three years. This is a lot of money for local government on an important service, and it can be enhanced and it can be more fully utilized, and it seems really frustrating that all it is, is a bit of signage that seems easy in other areas. So it's not that I'm opposed to the, I'm not opposed to the agreement, I just need some sort of push point that they will really pay attention. Thank you.
Yes, so what we could do is, when we send in, if you decide to do the resolution today, when we send that in to the going writing, and B C to the upper levels, usually that can be a bit helpful as well. Your suggestion is pursuing it that way?
Yeah, I'd agree with that, and the frustration level there, this was something fairly frivolous, should be, should have solved. And I think we have triggered with some of the right people.
Is it just the mayor that can't be heard? Council Taylor, can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
No, it must be the ones that aren't in the chamber.
Lucy?
She's not responding.
And I could hear everybody except the ones in the office.
Yeah, Merlin said the phones clock out at forty minutes there.
Can we make it, but this part is possibly still being recorded?
Okay, I think we're back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah, just saying that this has also been passed up. Our technical issue is the phone times out at forty minutes, so we hit the forty-minute mark, phone times up. This has been passed up to some upper-level people in B C Transit. They were kind of also unaware that this had been solved and irritated by that fact. So we might be a little bit more traction, but yeah, adding that letter so it formally goes out there, I think is important as well. Any further questions from anybody on Transit or this motion? Does somebody wish to move and second it? Moved by Council Taylor. Seconded by Council Herring. We'll go with that. Yeah, I mean, it's already underway. This is a standard one-year annual, but yes, we need to fix things. Any further discussion or comment? Council Sim.
I missed what Ms. Gru had been saying about, and yourself, mayor, just before you, I missed what Ms. Gru and yourself had said.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
What are the advantages to signing this now, like versus pushing the point? I missed that response. I appreciate everybody's frustrated, but I also know the red tape, if signatures aren't dotted, that sometimes finds people to loop around.
I'll let Ms. Gru repeat her comments, because I don't know any of it, but basically, it's been, it has, it's somewhere in the middle is the problem. So sending a letter, her major comment, to upper levels of Transit, to push that this issue be resolved, especially with the signage on the buses. Because people, when Ms. Gru has been able to get off the food chain a little bit higher, that they're actually also disengaged, that this hasn't been solved. So maybe a little upward pressure and a little bit of downward pressure applied at the same time. And I think by the fact that this was actually already been delayed once, also that's what matters.
Okay, that sounds like a great resolution. It sounds like good teamwork. So thank you for that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor. And I see enough happened, so that's happened. Thank you. Moving on to, we've done the presentation, the statutory public hearings, the election of mayor's report. I have a recommendation, I've changed up the community representation a little bit. Council Bafford is now on the Forest Working Group for the frustrated four future, and I've also put him on the Wells Great Community Forest Commission as the head of the role lately, and I want to get people trained up. Everybody else is staying the same, mostly because we haven't had a lot of meetings to do with your individual committees. So that's the thinking behind that. So we're going to go to Christmas, and then we'll think about it again, because obviously COVID has pretty much wiped out everything that we would normally do between January and June. So congratulations, Council Bafford, on the Forest Working Group is a Zoom meeting. Hate to break it to you, but hey, it's quite active again, and there's lots to talk about there, for sure. And with the C W P P that just came down, I'm sure there'll be even more. I had a T N R D Zoom meeting or Webex meeting last week, lots to talk about there as well. You think this is hard? Try doing it as a twenty-seven directors and six to seven staff on the call, because it's quite interesting. Other than that, I'm just going to pull up my calendar here a little bit. Lots of conversations with community members about issues to do with TMX, the economy, tourism, how things have been going with little personal struggles on a lot of those. A lot of meetings, joint technical fresh end wildfire meeting, yeah, the Forest Working Group was a long one. Had the meeting, virtual meeting with the M L A's Millbar and Stone and the regional mayors from here, they kept it to regional mayors at this point, with Chase, Sun Peaks, myself, Ward, Stamer from Barrier, Cameron's was on the call. We're all basically on the same page, and we're all suffering some level from issues with the provincial government, same page mostly on tourism, if not different levels of effectiveness. It was about an hour and a half call, but it was quite good, and we're going to continue doing those stuff for the near future, so. Oh, right, sorry. So you all have to approve the appointment. So would we get a mover and a second on that, please? Moved by Council Taylor, seconded by Council Fizzle, a little in favor, that's happened. Thank you. Sorry. So that's, I'm just going to leave that as my report at this particular point. I have lots of conversations happening in the world, and I will try to, I'll update you in the near future. Yeah, I've had to go back to work as well, so that's made things a little bit more interesting. Council Bafford, you are up next.
Mr. Blackwell, been pretty quiet on the last front from the council point of view, keeping up with all the emails, reading the stuff that Ms. Gru is sending out, which has been great as far as information goes. Had a few discussions, social distancing with some people around the neighborhood, and basically having, doing TMX, kind of going through the backyard on several different things, so pretty much been the last two weeks.
Good, thank you. Council Fizzle.
I attended a webinar last week on the opportunity of here and now, local government in green recovery. I know communities are pulling together. One of the three lessons I learned was that everyone is in this together, and we have to start thinking past the pandemic. There's lots of mutual layout there from the government, and everybody does appreciate that, but what they really appreciate is on the ground, neighborhood to neighborhood, neighbor to neighbor, and helping, how everybody helps in their own neighborhood and make sure everybody's safe and well. So that was really good. I enjoyed that. Senior Society has received funding from the Interior of Community Services to help with vulnerable seniors, so I'm looking forward to being able to get different ideas out there on what we can do for them. But we've heard a lot about how seniors are in trouble and et cetera, et cetera, but I just wanted to let everybody know that seniors are connecting with each other, and it's such a very cool thing. I have a hundred and eighty seniors on my email, and I have them send to me letters that they're sending to each other, and then I move them on, and then they reply, and it's a very positive thing. They're telling everybody what they're doing, about their past lives, and, you know, where they came from, and it's this historical thing going. It's, I want everybody to know there's lots of fun things happening with seniors, that's all. So that's my report.
Excellent. Good to hear. That is one of the big fears, that we're not shaking in and out, for sure. And I'm glad that they're all talking and sharing their life stories of the scarys that might be. Council Sim, do you have a question?
I did. I just, question is about the vulnerable seniors, and I'm delighted to hear about the positive side. How many vulnerable seniors do you think we're kind of looking at?
It's a tough, it's a tough number to come up with because what we're finding between myself and the better at homes, as the seniors are coming out of the woodwork that we didn't even know existed.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of people that we didn't even put into the numbering. So between the two of us, we're working together to make sure we can capture them well. I can't give you a number right now.
Okay, and just on that, what types of things would summarize the vulnerabilities? So is that vulnerabilities in terms of health, in terms of economics? What were some of those criteria?
Economics, health, loneliness, isolation, you know, some people don't have a partner anymore, so they're all by themselves. And finance and health is a big one, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Yeah, and also just add to that, knowing that the whole of your YCF, instead of doing soup kitchen, is doing one or two delivered meals a week. And their numbers are depending on, they're averaging to around twenty to over thirty, with their providing two meals a week, too. And that's, they can definitely see that that point off. The flip side is the food bank, which has actually gone down because there are so many checks coming in, and people are making the choice to buy their own groceries. Counselor Bradford, do you have further questions or comments on that?
Mostly a question from Counselor Frizzle. I know the federal government gave apparently considerable sum of money to United Way to assist seniors with getting food in the house or getting medications or stuff like that. Have you heard anything back from United Way or anything along whether they got any of that or if it's helping out in the community?
That is part of the funding that I got through Interior Communities. That money is coming through the United Way for that, from that, that the federal government gave.
So they set up a, the United Way recently contacted me actually on the weekend asking if I would join you to a community impact council. And they set up a committee that will be taking in information and potentially applications over the next three weeks. And then a decision will be made on where the money goes up to the full disclosure, amongst the nine thirty, we're talking to the councilary.
Excellent.
And specifically directed to vulnerable.
So that's more money coming from United Way. Is that what you're saying? Wow.
It's coming from like Canadian organizations, the United Way's under through the federal.
Any further note? Moving on to Counselor Herring. You are silent, sir. You're still muted. I'll let you know when you're unmuted. Keep on trying.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You can hear you now.
All right. Not sure why that stopped working. All right, so, yeah, I don't have much to update on other than just a few concerns brought to me by community members. In particular, I've heard a lot in the last week about physical health. People are worried about the closing of the gym. We're seeing Dutch Lake as a place that's filling up with people very fast. So social distancing on the beach, of course, is something we're going to have to figure out. But it also, you know, the situation limits people's access to the beach essentially in some cases. And another big thing is cyclist safety pathways. You know, basically, I've had some concerns about this, and then in my own experience, I've been buying bikes. So I've been going to Kamloops to speak with bike shops, and they're selling out of bikes. So that, you know, maybe indicates the fact that the people are finding other ways to exercise, and that might require some additional infrastructure from us, if not just some education. I mean, I've literally had rearview mirrors clipped within six inches of me on Old North Thompson Highway this week at times. It's been a little bit disturbing, but it just goes to show things are changing in the community recreation wise, and we might have to support some of that.
Yeah, that'd be good task for, oh, I don't know, a counselor to take on some social media and educate on the biking. I'll let this group talk a little bit about, we are aware of the Dutch Lake beach issues, and I think we are sort of scaling up by law patrols of that at least.
So we were actually, I went down with Mr. Smith on Saturday, and we pushed out social media, and we both pushed out social media and watching for death, because there's a lot more people on the street. So I'll get, it's small, but we'll get Stephanie to continue pushing that out. Because we did post it, so maybe if we pin it, people will pay better attention to it. And potentially even put it in areas where people are biking, maybe with a small finesse without littering in the media signs. Last time we did all the same homework, people didn't like it too much, so they were a few minutes.
Yeah, I think it's worth, I'm learning what I'm putting out on social media. Like if some of the rest of you want to take that on as a project, that's a great idea. Kamloops councils have done the same sort of thing. Two of them are avid bike riders, and they made it basically their public passion to inform the world about the dangers and joys of biking to and from work.
I do think if Counselor Herring or you could do that, then you could talk about your personal experience and without, you know, naming either or, obviously, but I think it would be really beneficial.
Yeah, I'd be really happy to have that conversation, for sure. I can make some Facebook posts, and I'll touch base with you guys about that.
Yeah, maybe we can, I'll try to connect you with Kathy Sinclair, a council that a lot of us are referencing. And I'll see if I can find you some ideas from them. Okay, moving on to Counselor McKenzie.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Quite a couple of weeks for myself as well. Did attend the ECTV meeting there this afternoon. And myself and Mayor Blackwell did happen to participate in the first annual Cruising Clearwater Mobile Car Show. It was an amazing turnout for two, three weeks of organizing, as best that could be done. Total a hundred and eight registered vehicles. It was pretty cool to see that parking lot full, respecting as best we could our physical distancing rules. We did what we could and broke the seven thousand dollar mark for the food bank, which was amazing to see that happen. You know, in that short amount of time. And regardless, like something I love about this town, regardless of what's going on here, whatever tragedy is going on, people still dig deep in their pockets. Be it Joe Bob from down the street, it didn't matter. People were handing in more than their twenty dollar entry fee. Just, you know, it's going to a good cause. It was a good thing, a first of its kind. Just amazing to see the way it all turned out. It's a really good day.
For sure, I echo that. It was an excellent day. And the vast majority of people followed the rules. Stay in your car, stay close to your car, don't interact, drive, drive safely. And yeah, so there was a lot of questioning outside of town to how that was safe. And, you know, you had to see it to go, this was actually done quite well.
Oh, for sure.
To the organizers, for sure, your brother and Cole Darlene Vaughn and everybody else that got involved in that, did the heavy lifting on that. It is a stressful thing, as we all know on Capitol, they organize events. So the fact that we pulled that off was fantastic. Counselor Sim.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I thought that the other brilliant thing about that particular event was one, what a great morale booster it was for the community. And the second thing was, is after seeing the number of entries, how they worked it so that nobody cluttered the highways. So it was very seamless. It was brilliant, brilliant execution of some of the logistics. So otherwise, a lot of my time over the last little while has been dealt with the school board and how you open up schools. So that's been a tricky one. And I think one conversation that all governments are going to have to look at, and that includes council, is who's responsible as we go through this? And I look to our arena, and I look to our facilities, is that new cleaning procedures are not going to be the catchall. And working with our M L A and working with upper levels of government about that there needs to be an equal emphasis, if not greater emphasis, on the personal responsibility for washing your hands is the number one directive from our health personnel. And WorkSafe B C needs to understand this clearly. Otherwise, everyone is going bankrupt. That includes businesses, and that includes municipalities. And how to have proactive conversations that, you know, empower that. If you've, if people feel vulnerable because of their health, how we work with them to keep them safe by maybe not going out and finding different ways to interact with them on a community level? I think that's one of the biggest conversations we're going to have moving forward, is that we cannot be responsible solely. That's all there is to it. So if people have got questions about the school's reopening, there is a five-phase plan, which is a bit complicated because it's in reverse order to what the government's doing for a restart. So that's confusing. I do want to stress for anybody who is asked that it is voluntary as of June first, if you want to send your children back to school or not, and people really need to understand that. And I think in conjunctions, we see the whole restart on many different levels is just extending the kindness factor, is we don't know what people are up against, and we don't know what is prompting their actions, and just be kind. So I stress that. The other really interesting thing that I took part in was a session on how to grow the economy, especially the infrastructure economy. And the panel speakers were Christie Clark, Daryl Dexter, who is the former premier of Nova Scotia, and John Baird, who served both provincially as well as federally. There was a lot of discussion around shovel-ready versus shovel-worthy. And the difference with that is, sure, we've got a lot of the shovel-ready, but are they worthwhile projects in conjunction with what's going on now? And the other thing that we should continue to push, because we, it sounds like the federal government's going to be pushing out some infrastructure grants, is should maintenance and repair be a part of the infrastructure conversation? And again, pushing that conversation through to our M L A as well as the T N R D, that that is equally important. Just to build infrastructure and then have to be accountable for it, is that always the best conversation to be having? So I thought that that was really good. Clearwater's in an excellent position because of our asset management plan, so that's good. There was also a big discussion about the electrification of Canada, and I looked, I thought that was really interesting in terms of an electrification of the North Thompson Valley and keeping that as a corridor. We've had these discussions at council a few years ago, but they were early days. But now I think it's becoming, you know, stronger and stronger. There was discussion on that, that some of the L N G development may not be as site-specific to British Columbia, given some of the needs in Alberta. So will we see a transfer of that? But we're really rich in our electric opportunities and where Clearwater might fit with that. I think that for our next infrastructure committee meeting, it would be really interesting to look at some of our shovel-ready projects and what's there. And to also make sure that they've gone through the proper vetting of getting some of our consultation. Is that also ready to go? So if that money comes out, we can hit the ground running with that. And just what some of those consultation, is that all in play? That's held up other communities. I think we're very fortunate with who our neighbors are, but making sure that that's good. And I think that's really about it. But it's pushing that whole roads and rails and understanding that just having one strong neighbor is maybe not in our best interest. So that was, it was a great call there. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Taylor, you're in the room.
Yeah, so being in the room, I'd like to acknowledge we have our public back. Welcome back, Annabelle. And also, again, like everyone else, not too busy in terms of meetings and what have you. But I do want to make a call out to the Healthy Living Program and the extension of our live streams to cover non-exercise classes. So we had our beekeeping expert president of beekeeping club do a little live stream. And I think we have the gardening one, and I think it's a good thing for that group to be. And also, then I spoke to Ray about men in sheds and how he combines his two passions. We don't have a producer of beekeeping equipment in Clearwater. So whether the men in sheds start building beekeeping equipment, make it sell to the local people, or the, an idea, expertise he has in sharing his two passions. So we'll see what happens there. Other than that, yeah, it's been fun.
Yeah, no, I echo on the Healthy Living Community Program. They've, the view count on some of our stuff are the people we have in the community that are interested in it. So it's been booming successfully and online. It's a great idea. And also, and many of us suggested the idea of expanding the forum. Director Schaefer's all through the room, watching the show today. So we have two audience. Okay, so moving on to committee of the whole, committee of the whole, Councilor Sim, ask them.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. I can hear you.
We did have a great meeting earlier. Thank you very much for all your input. Some of the things that we're going to be looking forward to is faces of resilience and pursuing possible projects there. Looking at some recruitment and retention issues. And our next week for our C E D task force and two community surveys that are coming out that I think will be really informative as we look to post COVID.
Counselor McKenzie, infrastructure. We're just going to say next meeting is June two, because you're still on mute. Unless you want to come off mute.
There we go. June second will be the next one.
Parkinson, right, Counselor Herring.
Our next meeting is going to be June sixteen.
Thank you. And my next to none, Counselor Taylor.
You're all in December, December first.
Moving on to Counselor Frizzle, Joint Services Advisory Committee.
There's a recommendation that the minutes of the Joint Services Committee held January thirteenth and March sixteenth, twenty twenty, be received. I move that.
A seconder? Seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor? Everybody wave your hands here. And then it's passed. Trail Task Force Committee, Counselor Taylor.
So we have a meeting later today, but there's also a recommendation here that the minutes of the Trail Task Force Committee of February nineteenth and April twenty first be received. So I'll move that.
And a seconder on that one. Counselor Frizzle seconded that. All those in favor? Moving on to junior council, Counselor Sim, anything new from the junior councillors?
No, but what I would like to draw council's attention to is just to watch out in the next little while that the grad class will be coming up with some alternative ways to celebrate that. And whether that means banners or lawn signs or something, I would really like to see council participate in something like that. So I may bring that forward for the June second. But I think for these kids, it's a big milestone, and to be missing it is going to be really hard. And I think it's very worthy of their council to extend gratitude for all that they have contributed to our community and to wish them well on their next stages. So I'll keep you alert to that for the June second meeting.
Question on that, how many kids are graduating this year? Do you know?
I won't know. I'll have that updated. They've got sort of different lists that they have, obviously with COVID nineteen, there's some concerns. And I will say that that, for people who are asking, is that sometimes opening up the schools and the high school will be open to capture those people who need some more assistance to make sure they get past the finish line.
Yeah, for sure. There's definitely, there's a study that came out that sixty percent of kids who are B C are not terribly engaged by distance learning. Quite sure there's a lot of people struggling here in Clearwater on that, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So as they said, be kind. Everybody's got a different path to walk.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Foresty Working Group, it says Counselor McKenzie, so we'll let you do the recommendation, but it's going to be Counselor Bradford for the next little while. So Counselor McKenzie, you wish to move the recommendation?
Yes, I wish to move the re-
And you froze. Soon as your mic came on. Seconded by Counselor Bradford, all those in favor? And then it's passed. I move all three of them submitting. And then Community Economic Development Task Force, back to you, Counselor Sim for that one. And we have a delegate meeting, which has now been determined.
Yeah, so our next meeting is on the twenty seventh, and as I alluded to earlier, our consultant will be sending out two different community surveys that will ideally be launched early next week after the questions have been vetted through Ms. Gru. We'll do a two-week window, and that feedback will be derived for lots of different purposes, especially in regards to our social agencies.
Moving on to committee, you've represented, oh, sorry, no, that's not the answer. Committee Representation Reports, Tourism, Wildfire. There's, the last meeting we had did not meet forum. We're still trying to get a meeting that will meet forum. But there is a recommendation that the minutes for the Tourism, Wildfire regular board meeting of February fifth, March eighth, and April first be received. I get a seconder on that. Seconded by Counselor McKenzie, all those in favor?
I have a question on that. Just a question, recognizing that there was no quorum, is I just wondered, was there, was there any- was there any thought or plans of how Clearwater itself is going to move into the staycation model that's being promoted through Destination BC? And I know that our tourism manager, executive director, is really alive to that through Tourism BC. Any comment on that or not yet?
Yeah, so the meeting for that, it's still at Destination BC. It sounds like there's a lot of money going to be coming through Destination BC to push the whole explore BC within your region kind of approach. It changes by the day, and I think it probably is an idea that I touched base. I mean, Stephanie Oliva had a little bit of conversation since she wasn't even with us today. But maybe a lot of part of the range of appointment, and we discussed that a little bit further, considering how this changes every few days. But yeah, I would say that even some of the conversations that we've been having between, I'm sort of on a loop group with the municipality mayors. And the attitude even with some of them that was a month ago, we don't want to let people in very fast. It's everybody willing to open up to some degree at this particular point, including the mayors on the Rocky Mountain boundary with Alberta are looking for a safe way to invite Alberta back in, that's an Alberta back into their towns, which is quite a shift in attitude from a month, month and a half. Yeah, we need to get back to work on that for sure, faster than we think. You have the CAO report, do you have any, I didn't see any? Anybody have any questions of that?
Just real quick, just one comment. Really happy to see that a ticket was issued by the RCMP underneath our ticketing policy, which appears we have missed tickets, so. So read that, it looks good. And the other fact, there was a phone survey for COVID-19. I was just wondering if there's any information on that? And if there isn't now, will we see some results of that in the future?
So what we're doing is entering the, we entered the surveys into our business expansion retention program that we have through the VCS Development Association. Now we're doing a second phase two survey to follow up to survey one, and then after that, a report will come to council later.
More information on that shortly. Any further questions, Councilor Taylor?
So just in regard to the road plan, apologies if I miss it. Do we already, do we have an idea of like timelines for what work is going to get done?
So June 2nd, you'll get a report. But we are moving forward with Danley Road because we've been looking at this repair from the winter and the way to pre-noon. So we're doing about 780 meters to continue on with the graveling. And that should be, I was going to go back to, I have a note to myself, some of you guys, the timeline on that. And then the map, so you can see where we're doing.
So so 700 meters, just to be clear, we have this, 780 meters of more rubbleizing, but we're also repairing hospitals, audit, audit as much area as that we can save.
Yeah, and you can not save, so that's why we're doing, we're, the rubbleizing has worked really well. It's been much easier than it seems.
Yeah, this is, this is just a topic that I'm
Familiar with everything.
Well, it's not that, it's just that I have, I have Danley Road approaching me in the store for updates on that. So just being equipped with some timelines or
So I'll be sending out to you guys in the next couple of days. The other part that I think is really important, and I appreciate Alex's film for touching on that, is that we recognize that it is a safety issue from an evacuation perspective. Yeah, so it will be, it's part of the budget already, so we will be doing it within, before the end of January.
Director Schaefer, would you like to question or comment?
I would like to know if you're putting it on Facebook or something.
Oh, yeah. We're just putting all the plans in place first, and we always have them.
Yeah, it's a matter of, you've been dealing with contractor timelines and availability of things that weren't certain yet, so we didn't want to.
Well, the other thing that's happening with the Blue Bridge is what we worked on by the miniature transportation, and we're partnering with them, so that the wooden bridge, the bunch of wood is going to be replaced. So we've been working on little paper wet, and they've actually been really awesome about coming forward and helping us over there. It's on a time level.
We're getting a lot of value from MLTI and their project manager on that one, I'll just leave it at that.
The other part was to have it set up so that if we close the road hole, you know, we'll be for like a 15-minute period.
Any further questions on the CAO report? Lots in there once again, and excellent work. Thank you, Councilor Bradford. I actually read all the ones, and I still missed the RCMP ticketing under our backlog. So what did they take it for?
The noise.
Noise ticket, excellent, there we go. Moving on to item B, 2019 Carbon Neutral Progress Support. Ms. Shepherd, do you want to talk to you some?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Wuffell. The report isn't attached, it's been emailed. Oh, no, this is just the, that's the council report, but there's an actual carbon report. It's 18-page report of all the carbon projects that were done in 2019. So and that is attached, but it's been emailed to all of all of council.
I just saw, so this is 18 pages of riveting reading for you.
So it does have mostly 2019 information on it. The only information that's missing on it is the GHD emissions levels. On page 13, you'll see, I use 2018 numbers because we are implementing new software right now with the province, and we've had to, which is on getting it to sync with portfolio manager. So I don't have a true count on GHD emissions yet for 2019, I'm closed. But it has to be reported publicly by June 1st. So I, the report that you receive by email will be going on, but the the GHD number will be 2019 numbers, and I'll be bringing that back probably to the next meeting with the 2019, the full report with the 19 number. Just so council aware, that will be going on the website, and it has to be publicly reported by June 1st. That's the day before our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Shepherd on that? No, just a comment on that, it's interesting, one of the leadership conferences that I, council listed on. Unfortunately, somewhere in there, they decided that that biomass is not a good thing. And there's actually a bit of a movement against biomass, especially for export markets for pellets. So I'm going to dig into that a little bit further and figure out why that is. But it did name the national news. But obviously, our local stuff is more of a safety issue than anything with a benefit. Nothing under bylaw. Oh my God, there's nothing under bylaw. So exciting. The correspondent, moving on. Request for support, city northbound tour, we're reading a property tax deferment program. Any thoughts, comments on that one, item A? So we don't need to do anything on that if there are no thoughts or comments on that. Okay, moving on to item B, Acres Request of Support. This is the one about the cannabis litigation. Any thoughts or comments? An interesting letter, but I don't necessarily know that it fits our wheelhouse, it's another community. Moving on to correspondent information, still good news release. Councilor Sim, do you want to talk about that at all, or what's going on?
Clear, the District of Clearwater has received this, an award as part of this in the past, and some of the work that was done, it was really, really great. Revelstoke had a marvelous submission. In fact, they were all great. So if you ever have a chance to take a take a browse at those, well worth it. We tried to contact each of the communities and sort of photobomb them by Zoom or whatever, and sometimes they were acceptable. But anyway, communities are still doing great things under extraordinary circumstances.
Any further, no? Sorry, I'm just trying to read and look at all your faces at the same time to look for the cues. BG Wildfire Service Official Wildfire App, item B. I have downloaded this, it's actually very cool. The mapping on it is amazing. So if you haven't downloaded that app, check it out for sure. It's useful for a lot of other things other than just wild fires. And item C, Thompson Nicola Regional District Building Inspection Services. Nothing, no notices of motion. Item 20A, Committee of the Whole, Councilor Taylor, I think we discussed that basically we're kind of moving Committee of the Whole into regular house meeting permits?
Yeah, I I thought that's what we were going to be moving forward with, with I guess like a temporary suspension of separate meetings and then moving it into, moving what needs to be handled by council into the meeting. And then I think really good thing is we can be more creative or find kind of alternative settings for still getting stuff done, but staying conscious of that time, kind of involved in in the committee of the whole meeting. And just like how can we better support staff just during the crisis that we're in right now? And so maybe I misunderstood and we weren't, we weren't thinking about it, but I hadn't agreed to remove Committee of the Whole, or whether we thought we were, we went and changed our minds. But I'd like to table that conversation again and see if we can actually do a temporary suspension.
I'll let Miss Gru speak to her recollection, whatever else.
So we were, yeah, we thought that because things were completely closed, that we would go away, name construction committee, the whole into council, and then maybe go from there and keep doing that until it changed. There were a few topics to deal with on the economic development. But as the topic is now on the table, I would like to bring to to bear the point that really a committee of the whole actually should be within your council agenda anyway. And we've been talking about moving to that, and Mayor Wuffell talked about that as well. But then we thought just to give people the opportunity to kind of chair stuff, and you could still do that within a council meeting.
Yeah.
Technically, you, the committee of the whole has the title, and then you can speak about your topics within it if you're doing it to the community charter room.
And before anybody else comments, I, that would be my, just thinking about it today and having this come up again, that would be my preference, that we still can do the title of Committee of the Whole. If we move it into the 2 o'clock meeting as your section under your report, your report, that we rerun your agenda there. If you run longer than that, if you need a larger one. But maybe just for the foreseeable future, we're coming to the summer season. A lot of us have a lot of other things that we have to deal with, and we're going to have a limited number of meetings. But it'd be much easier to start at 2 and have a continuous meeting until we're done versus the the 1 o'clock meeting at this particular point. And that's just my thought on that for now.
And you can still have your points, but there's the construction committee, you still have your point under that title, can protect your development by.
Yeah, but and 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 also, you know, at this point, I think we try to first think what will happen, and I'll be hoping there. But just to be a little bit further through this COVID thing. And first, that is my preference until we get back to in-room meetings at least. Councilor Bradford, you have a lot?
I'm comfortable either way, I just have a quick question for staff. Basically, the Committee of the Whole makes recommendations to the council meeting. Is there an issue around that? Do they have to be separate with the recommendation coming forward? If you blend it in, would you still run them as two different meetings with just one agenda? Or what are the galvanizers around that?
It would deal with the recommendations as a council or either. It doesn't have to go, all you're doing is just under Committee of the Whole, infrastructure role, have a, you know, a section, and then the resolution is the resolution of council.
So we don't, I don't think we have to make a decision at this meeting, we still have a next Committee of the Whole meeting going to come up anyways, and a whole next June meeting.
Well, June 2nd would be the infrastructure, one of them. We do have two speakers for that one.
We have two speakers for that one anyway, and that's that's for the 1 o'clock meeting.
Well, they would do too, if that personal, that's so. So one is the road strategy, and the other one is the fourth to top, that's not what our wildlife protection role was. And those are both pretty important conversations.
Any, so maybe we'll just keep that on, Councilor Sim, go ahead.
So I just, I just wonder, the way we work it at School Board is that we are actually assigned to committees, and they're held outside meetings, and then the recommendations are brought to it. So it's it's never really Committee of the Whole unless there's specific items. Is is that kind of where we're going? Because I, you know, I, I love the structure and the the concept to it, but I look at some meetings, economic development, that go a little longer. And that makes for a super, super long one-sitting meeting. So I, but I also don't know if everybody wants to sit in on all of those things or if there's just a completely different format.
So the school act might have a different way of doing meetings. What I can do is I'll do a short little memo to the council on how Committee of the Whole
Really works within within the county? Okay, yeah.
But I, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is that we, they, we don't, they don't have Committee of the Whole at all. They're just committees. So it it is a different one. And then they bring the recommendations as the committee to vote on as the whole. But they have their own meetings, you know, on each various topic.
So there's three or four different committee structures that council can have with the mayor, right? So I'll I'll bring that information back to you.
Yeah, that sounds similar to like Trail Task.
Yeah.
Yeah, TNRD has the, has both. So they have what you're talking about as well as, we have Committee of the Whole, and then there's committees for utilities, solid waste management, and versi. So it's a, it's a matter of, the amount of business that allows small groups of directors to focus on that. And then we have Committee of the Whole, they really have business that isn't the regular council meeting that we all have to know. It's a
And the and the caveat to that is what we're talking about, School Board, TNRD, all of that, they have big staff. We don't. So I I share that as as that if you take it outside, it does create some some different, you know, meetings. But I like the concept, I'm I'm keen to see about some of the recommendations.
Yeah, sure, maybe we'll just bring you back to the next meeting and meeting after that with the recommendations. So we'll just go forward to the assumption that we're good as usual for the next meeting. Presenters coming. And we'll simply leave it at that for now. Comments from the public before we go into camera? Annabelle?
I'd like to know what the problem is with BC Transit and what has to be resolved.
So at this point, we we have a few issues. Most of them seem to be in the works, but the biggest one is we do that for actually a lot of years now to take some information, saying that what is the sign that they have a nice day on the front? We actually wanted to say, we're going to Basko on this trip, or we're going to Davidby on this trip. And we've asked for that for a long time, and they're really slow at changing some of the very small requests that we would like done. Another issue that we had for a long time is because tax pay are funded through the TNRD and us and a lot of others, good statistics as to how many people are riding it. So we kind of know which routes are the ones we should be saying, hey, let's invest more time into that. Let's make that happen more often, or the cattle's connector route, or whatever, connector route. And they have, even though they know we wanted that for a long time, it's taken an awful long time to get them to give us good information so that we can go, that's worth investing in, another trip on Saturday or Friday for cattle.
And another thing is, is the BC rider side couldn't be updated, because the last one was April 1st, and I'm 2017.
So the last two other ones were part of the education that we're working on.
Yeah, yeah. So if you've got frustration, anything else? Okay.
A lot of repeat, but I do not want to keep Clearwater with this BC transit.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the intention, it's, you know.
And it feels pretty lonely going to council, takes a while because of their toll, like it's fire.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Cheryl Thomas, we have our first Zoom question comment.
Okay, thank you. First off, thank you for inviting so many people to the Zoom meeting. I thought that was really bonus, and probably I got invited because of the forestry information. But I think it's really valuable for people to be able to listen in. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Second thing is kind of a little bit of a critique. If people could speak into their microphones, like one reason why I didn't have my picture on is because I had to have my phone up to my ear to hear Leslie and sometimes Merlin and like so Shelley, who leaned right into hers, it was very audible, and then I had to pull my ear back. So that's just a bit of a critique. And then one more comment that I'd like to ask a question of. When the pipeline people are here, and we're thinking about, I've got my emergency social services hat on for a moment, and we're thinking about wildfires, are those pipeline workers going to be anywhere trained or available to fight fires?
That's the big question. I don't know, but it is a good one. That's a good question. I don't know, but it is a good one. I think it also incorporating them into evacuation procedures is another critical issue that we need to talk about with PMX. And another reason we really need to get the technical support team together, not just the doctors on PMX. We will strive to get that answered for you.
Yeah, even if you bring it back to the forestry working group, because I think everybody would be interested in that.
I'm quite sure that TransDont has its own wildfire protection or fire lab built in. I can't see why they wouldn't. They cover all those bases. But would they be available in a broader sense to help out the regional district and the community as a whole? Other question, which would be.
Yes.
That's the thing to know.
That's the one. Thanks very much. Yeah. And then Mayor Blackwell, I often ask you whether or not there is a solid waste management committee going on, because various people are asking me solid waste questions. And we haven't been invited back to the public advisory group meeting. And so could you take that to the TNRD? I know it's probably not happening over Zoom. But would you mind, please, taking that back to the regional district when you go?
They have another advisory committee.
There's another advisory committee?
Yeah, the Public Advisory Committee pulled together the plan, the 10-year plan, back in the early century. And then we revised it two years ago. Warren McLennan, myself, other people from this area were on it. And then it went to the Ministry of Garbage in, in the, you know, then, of course, all the wildfires happened and everything. But I really want to know whether or not that's available, because I have been sitting on that for years, and people ask me these questions, and I have no answer.
We'll get back to you. But my understanding is that they've actually struck a new advisory committee. Did I got that correctly?
Okay, well, then could you please figure out who the representative for this area is so that I can advise the people that ask me who that public person is? Not the, not the government person, not you, but the public person.
I will, I'll see what I can find out and get back to you when I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Merlin.
Seems like a very confusing question at this one. Any further questions or comments before we move into camera? Oh, okay. So there is, we're going to take a couple-minute recess here. Does everybody do bathroom break? But we'll move the recommendation that, sorry, the recommendation is that Meeting of Council, District Clearwater, senior staff, as per Section 91A of a community charter, be closed to the public to consider matters pursuant to the community charter 91C, J, G, and 92B. Now, that's the recommendation. Do I have to move this before we move into camera?
Yeah.
Okay. So moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Bradford, all of them in favor. So we're, we're moving into camera. We'll give a five-minute break, and then we'll start business. Thank you, people.
Is that a new link, Leslie?
Yeah.